All right, two public hearings. We really draw a man, don't we? It's close enough to seven. We're gonna get this meeting started. Welcome everybody for June 6th, 2011 meeting. Let's talk about the minutes from our multiple meetings we had in May. We'll read over them. Got any corrections? I really don't like the calling my trip a vacation. It was actually a partly business, but I won't change it for the record. I guess it's close enough.
Thank you, sir.
Yeah. Is there a motion?
No motion.
Close and true for the second.
Change.
All favoring raise your hand. Okay. It gives us good... It's my privilege now. We're gonna swear in a new alderman. Taking Jerry Evans' place. It's been a hard field for this group of small... Mr. Evans has with us many years. But the aldermen and women, they worked hard and they worked together. And they found what we truly believe is the right person to fill this board. Farrell Jameson has been making money in Franklin resident most of all of his life. And he's always had his heart and mind on bettering the community. He's someone that we really feel like can be a good... With his background and his desire, we really feel like he can be a good addition to the board. Now, Mr. Vic Perry, our clerk of Superior Court, is here to swear Farrell in. And we want to have that right here in front, I believe, so the cameras all can capture it. You got anybody who wants to stand by his side, Farrell?
No.
Charlie, come on up and stand beside you, uniformer.
That hurt him.
I'll give the pen you first. I, Farrell Jameson.
I, Farrell Jameson.
Who solemnly swear.
S solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
I will support the Constitution of the United States.
So have we got.
So have we got.
I, Farrell Jameson.
I, Farrell Jameson.
Who solemnly and sincerely swear.
Who solemnly and sincerely swear.
That I will be faithful and bear true allegiance.
I'll be faithful and bear true allegiance.
To the state of North Carolina.
State of North Carolina.
And to the constitutional powers and authorities.
Constitutional powers and authorities.
Which are or may be established.
Which are or may be established.
For the government thereof.
For the government thereof.
And that I will endeavor to support.
I will endeavor to support.
Maintain and defend.
Maintain and defend.
The Constitution of said state.
Constitution of said state.
Not inconsistent.
Not inconsistent.
With the Constitution of the United States.
With the Constitution of the United States.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
So have we got.
So have we got.
I, Farrell Jameson.
I, Farrell Jameson.
Do swear.
Do swear.
That I will truly and honestly.
That I will truly and honestly.
Mean myself and the office of alderman in town of Franklin.
Mean myself and the office of alderman in town of Franklin.
According to the best of my knowledge and ability.
According to the best of my knowledge and ability.
So have we got.
So have we got.
They're voters now, you know that. Dick and Carol grew up about a football field away, I think.
That's right.
Go through the woods. Yeah. Thank you, Dick.
You bet.
Okay, while Farrell's signed autographs, we can move on to our public hearing on the minimum housing standards. I'll call the public hearing open for business about 7:06, it looks like. Ask if there's anyone here to speak or against the proposed minimum housing standard order. There's a four vote in the back. She's smiling. But I don't think she wants to be the only one to talk. You wanna say something else? Sure?
Um, just that a quick glance that I made through the document looks good, both as a person with a rental property and as someone in a neighborhood where there are some problems. So I think it's a good first... I think it's good stuff.
Anybody else to be heard? If there's one once, if there's one twice, we'll call the public hearing to a close and put it before the board for its consideration. Move to be adopted. There's a motion and a second. Any discussion? All favoring raise your hands. Close. That passes without objection. Board does good work. That's something that's been needed for a long time. And it's a lot of good work. All right, public session. We've got Karen Waters signed up first. Karen? Talk to us for a few minutes.
I'm here to talk a little bit about the library and our request for the town to continue funding our Reading Rover Bookmobile service that reaches childcare centers within the town of Franklin. This past year, the town had provided us $10,000 in funding to support those services. Those services support pre-literacy skill development in young children and also provide training and resources to caregivers who work with young children. This year, we are requesting a slight increase in that funding. We're asking for $12,000 to continue that vital service to people who would not be able to come to the library to get the resources and the training that we provide through our mobile service. We basically take the library to them. We've served through the third quarter. Our statistics go through March 2011. We saw 1,800 people at the Storytime and different programs that we provided directly to the childcare centers. We completed 26... I had 26 people complete the training workshops for parents. And we had 16 caregivers complete the training workshops that we provide to help those people work more effectively with children to boost their educational basis for pre-literacy skills. We do some surveys with those childcare providers. And we've asked them for a little bit of information about how they feel about the service. And we had 100% of respondents indicate that they do find the Reading Rover service helpful in the development of those pre-literacy skills that help children enter school ready to read, write, and learn. We have some comments from those who were surveyed. They said they would be lost without the Reading Rover service and that they feel that the Reading Rover helps to maintain their center of excellence in the area of literacy. This is implemented by providing books, games, music, et cetera, an overall literacy experience. We think that we do a terrific job of bringing the library to those young children and to their caregivers and parents. And we have submitted a request for the town to consider continuing the funding that you have provided for this year. We're certainly grateful to you for providing that funding and hope that you will consider sustaining that funding and possibly increasing. Be happy to answer any questions that you have. Okay. Thank you very much.
Don Swanson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Board members. I'm not sure whether this can be done in an open session or not, but I'll try anyway. I just discovered that I need an approval today. And it's too late to get on the agenda. We're having a patriotic rally at the gazebo on Saturday, July 2nd. We would like to close Iowa Street from Main Street to the entrance of the People's Parking Lot from 9:30 until 12:30. And make this request on the interest of public safety. And requested to approve the street. I was talking to Chief Bradley. And he's... As a matter of fact, he was honored. He reminded me that I needed to come and see you all this evening.
Did you think you could just close it without asking?
Well, I don't know what I was thinking. I thought that, well, actually, the chief thought... He forgot about... Could we shut them or whatever? He thought he had the authority to do it. And then he called me this morning and said, whoops.
So that's the day that particularly closed. And they closed it a little later than the Saturday night.
Do you have the night fireworks?
That's what we're... Close and open close.
Do you mind if we do the fireworks? Would that... Close the hour seven here to nine before?
What is... The poor somebody this year. So you're talking about just really closing Phillips Street, not Main Street?
No, Iowa's...
Oh, Phillips and South.
Yeah. Just the area between the gazebo and the courthouse. 9:30 and 12:30.
Keeping the safety of everything.
Yeah. Motion?
I'm making a motion.
All favoring raise your hand. All right. We got you on.
Thank you and thank you for all the cooperation you've always given us. We appreciate it.
You're welcome. Okay. Let's move on to number seven. Janet?
I'm giving everybody a copy of the budget minutes. Uh, that first comes for lease purchase proceeds for vehicles to place the farm in here. It's like a loan. It's like a warrant. We'll be getting money. And we paid the first lien already. And this is just actually for the county. And next one is application fee. That's about $8,500 that provides and had to pay us. And you know, last month, we approved a part of those two people at that farm that have proven with his... You know, the application has to go through all the procedures. And these people are trained to do that throughout the state. And this $8,500, we gotta show it as revenue and then it'll go out in other services under plan. Yes. So it's like... And then the North Carolina stamp grant, we've got $40,000 so far. And we've spent quite a bit on signs, but we're not gonna be able to get that other $60,000 the next year. So I'm gonna amend it down in expenses. And well, we're gonna amend it down on both ends because we showed $100,000 where we're not gonna get that. And if you go over... If you don't get the revenues, you're gonna be an exception. So we've got to show just the $40,000. And then on the retained earnings, that's in water. That's for utility fees and investment earnings. And what happened there, you know, we changed the rates. The growth was still down on the economy. And people's been, I guess, conserving water because all the taps are down and all the building is down. So that's actually picked a lot of those revenues on that side. But we have a definite retention rate that's really more effective than... And hopefully, as the economy comes back, it'll improve. Usually, we always come out ahead on that, but it's been down. This has got to take a year to sort of economy, actually.
My pool's got a leak, so we'll be okay.
Oh, well, that's good. I wish you'd told me. We can adjust those now. But if there's any questions, just ask me and I'll try to explain. But what we do is use the sources is actually where we're gonna get the money from. And then the uses would be to make sure it's balanced. And then actually change the total budget.
Do we have a choice, Janet?
Not really.
I'm moving to accept the budget minutes.
Okay. Thank you.
Second. Any discussion? All favoring raise your hand. All right, John. The metring case of the town attorney to change sign orders, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Each of you has in front of you the ordinance adopting certain amendments to the sign ordinance. These are fairly technical changes that address some problems that Mr. Grubman and I keep running into in enforcement. In section one of the ordinance, that is to get at the problem that one, you really shouldn't have any particular amount of time to remedy the violation of having to board the sign ordinance altogether. In other words, you know, you go out and don't get a sign permit and put up a sign. We ought to be able to demand that it come down immediately before you take the correct steps to, you know, let us see if it passes muster into the sign ordinance. Even when they do, for other violations, they'll shorten the amount of time to comply with the ordinance to 10 days. It is 30 days now. And the problem that we run into there is that sometimes you'll have somebody who's got a signed violation and you ask them to change it, but they have 30 days. And then 30 days later, you find that they made a change that causes two more violations and you've got to go 30 days. 10 days is really plenty of time to address those type of violations. And then section two of the ordinance is just to deal with... It's just really a very technical change to make clear that if multiple violations of the sign ordinance are on the same property, they constitute and are separate violations and can be fined separately. Really, this is to bring the sign ordinance method of enforcement into something that looks more like the UDOs. So this is more similar to something we already have in place in the UDO. I'm more unhappy answering your questions, but I would just recommend passing of this ordinance.
Just procedurally, can we just pass these changes just on the vote count?
Yes, sir. Because this is a general police power type of ordinance. It's not a land use, so it doesn't require any kind of public hearing or court notice or anything. So make a motion. The minutes be adopted.
We have discussion. All favoring raise your hands. Thank you, John. I like that work. Now, move on to number nine. Consideration of award to Allen Mountain Road sewer line extension. Say how much you got.
Okay. We have our bid opening. The bid tab and tables included in your agenda. The low responsible bidder was certified by McGill to be Iron Mountain Construction Company out of Mountain City, Tennessee, in the amount of $333,089.68. This figure was higher than what we had been estimating going into this project up until about three months ago. And there was... We had some good news at first in that we were gonna be allowed to open cut on the Colosseum to the line rather than having to bore. But the DOT sort of took that advantage away from us on the other end of the project by requiring us to have a bore for the entire dimension of the four lane where this line crosses underneath. And we're not gonna let us open cut alongside the Wells Grove Road line itself. The reason for it, I can understand. They stated that, one, they didn't want to have the sewer line run alongside the existing Wells Grove Road underneath the bike path where they overpass in case they have to widen it to the four lane instead of the two. I can understand. And then also that they were concerned that boring that close to the column miles that supports the overpass caused them some concerns. And there were federal restrictions that the state now has to operate under. The net result to the town is that that added $130,000 to the cost of the project. So originally, we had estimated going into it $200,000 based on the engineer's estimate. And you see the results.
And this is just another section, just another piece of the puzzle. Is there an overall line necessary for expansion and annexation?
This line will... Is part of the eventual service provision for the entire Allen Mountain Walmart, Berry's Tire, Power Company property up there. Part of their old project. And the service area would extend behind that to that vacant land up above where the Walmart and Berry's Tire currently is. And also, this will allow us to be able to get gravity flow access across the four lane to the properties on the other side of that sewer property, which is... I forgot the name of the sub in there. It's up there on top of it. But the old amphitheater property and the Power Company pole yard and some others on the other side will eventually also be able to be served out of this project. When this project is run to the... We stop our project at the edge of the DOT rideaway before you get to the Allen Mountain Wells Grove Road. Brightmire Development Company will be responsible to run two ground for their water or for their sewer hookup as well as to run down to Wells Grove Road for access to the water. And as part of our negotiation with them, the services for the camp for the town to go on up toward where the new construction is gonna be from the side road interchange coming into Allen Mountain Road will be now the driveway that Walmart is gonna be cutting across the Berry's property to intersect into the new highway or the new Allen Mountain Road. It's currently in construction. And that will then get the town fast having to run through that construction as far as extended services. Eventually, probably about a year and a half or two years, depending on more usage up there. Eventually, to look into where we've got a water line coming across the side road bridge.
And we'll fairly quickly recover some of our money in a collection of fees?
Well, just as an example, the assessment basically to Brightmire's for their part of the hookup is $160,000, which will be coming in the payment to the property.
That's about it. And then it'll also add to the big leg of it.
Yes.
Well...
So if... We had hoped it would be better, but it isn't.
What you think is necessary?
I think it's necessary. And we eventually have to provide that service around.
We have funding too?
We've got funding. Everybody's got funding. One other who could matter, just as a procedural matter. We must for the board to award this tonight. We would not initiate the contract until July 1st because the funds for this are in next year's budget. So that's one. Make sure everybody's procedurally... We don't sign the contract until July 1st.
It's an estimated completion period along the project.
Well, the engineers say that it should be done in three months, but the contractor, let me see. Probably be a five-month project. The engineer's estimate was that given reasonable weather and whatever, that we should be finished by the time that the Brightmires is through with their filling program. And that's four and a half months. So that'll be an approximate time.
Well, boy, a lot of money. Make a motion to bump up the order with the Iron Mountain Construction. Around $333,686. Discussion? All favoring raise your hand. Straight closing request to Arts Council. Who can fill us in on that? I want to tell the Arts Council we better not just pass it. I want to propose to go out of the end here. So what do you all got?
With Bobby Coutino, she had emailed us. You know, what they're wanting to do on July... Friday, July 1st is to vote portions, I believe, at Phillips in Iowa for their annual rock and roll jam.
It's not both. It's not both sides, man.
No. Just by right in front of your good people. It was not one hour. It was eight one. Eight three.
I read that in the agenda. And I said, no, still Bobby's standing was award win. We gotta let them do it, don't we?
He broke up that house.
They did. It was closing. They were closing up on July 2nd. My list is even something. Like if they come and tie you early, start early. You have a longer term. Is that a motion? That the Arts Council... Motion, second, any discussion? All favoring raise your hand. We... Sam, help you here on this one. And Mike Grubman, we planned a meeting still with the flood plain ordinance on, I think, in conjunction with our meeting on July 5th. We were informed very recently that mainly with all of the natural disasters occurring off in Missouri and other places, even closer. And it coinciding also with the day after a major holiday, that their thing was not gonna be able to provide anybody come on 5th. And they didn't necessarily immediately tell us they could come on 6th or the meeting in August or whatever. But based on that, we are probably gonna have to consider postponing that portion of our program we have set until we can lock in, get in somebody from FEMA present.
What we're going to pursue it and make them?
Still pursuing about getting, I don't know, the state or the federal folks here to explain, first of all, their position about a number of issues that the town has concerns about, but also answer question from... Questions from affected property owners. Your thoughts for maybe, what, September?
I have... Well, I think we could probably, depending on how the weather runs, we could probably do it, Artis. We're trying not to push it any farther than that because then we're getting closer to Hurricane... I have the hurricanes.
So we don't want to incur any more excuses.
We did get...
Three of the locusts come.
Yeah. When I first started this, we did get approval if we would have two people from FEMA, somebody about the mapping because that's an alternate route that we can take. If the map is in dispute, we could possibly have them look at it as opposed to just the state. Somebody to talk about the insurance program itself. Somebody to have the answer that could say, yes, everybody's gonna have to purchase or no, you don't have to hardly want to deal with that. And then I had two people lined up from the state. One from the engineering department to do the map issue and somebody else to explain any other questions about the state's impact on the insurance program. So those were the four. I did get the call today from FEMA. And she's been trying to schedule people for the last month now. Lucky I haven't sent the notices out to everybody yet because there's 209 people that are involved with the flood. And I want to do the notice because that truly is a land use issue if we decide to get into the program and then pass an ordinance. So I want to do the standard zoning, 10 to 25 day notice for even this need and for that decision. So those weren't even scheduled to go out until the next time. So I can kick it back a month. And if we want to look at August, we have another reason to have a second meeting in July and we possibly consider it for that. But I would need to know so that they can start planning. But I would need to know, uh, so that they can set a plan.
All this sounds good. Does it give you that? First of all, find out if people can send somebody to say that. Here's my thing here.
And if the weather comes down a little bit, then they'll, they'll get a lot of their work cleaned up. Because they had, Region Four out of Atlanta's had people in all of the states helping with the, with the disasters.
So that's where we're at on that now, folks. That's it, seven thirty. We'll call the public hearing on the proposed budget for fiscal year twenty-eleven, twenty-twelve. Call it open. The hearing asks if there's anybody here to speak, uh, pro or con regarding the proposed budget for next year. Alrighty. Go on once, go on twice. Our public hearing closed and, uh, put it on.
I'd like to say that, uh, normally I vote against the party. It is a protest vote, but a protest vote serves no purpose. I am still concerned about this four percent cost of living raise that benefits the highest paid employees more so than does the lower paid employees. I will continue to bring that argument every year as long as I live on this board. However, like I said, I don't think a protest vote would do any good. It would be a five in one vote, usually is. So I'll make the motion we adopt the budget. For those of you that may, for those of you that may feel faint, Grubman has been issued among you that.
Is there any storm out there? The lightning getting any go?
Lightning would not strike this branch.
Our second.
That motion, that call about the floodwater, the most. Okay, we got.
Sam, one, one point I'd like to bring up for the board. Bob Poindexter came by this afternoon and he apologized for not having gotten back to the town earlier. But what he said was that they're planning to do, and they have the money in the bank to do it and hand to do it, some more capital renovations to the museum building. And he was asking some forbearance to see if he's gonna be able to meet the deadline and get the money out this year in the remaining funds that the town had obligated to reserve if you go for the Historical Society. Uh, what, he was asking if there was some way of getting access to those funds. And what I simply recommended, and I told him I'd take it to the board tonight, was to amend the proposed budget for next year to allow the carry forward of those unspent funds, about seventy-five hundred dollars in the next year's budget. So that he would have the time to, to use, uh, that in the, uh, you know, the expenditures which his board had agreed for this fiscal year. That is to say, to reimburse the Historical Society for capital expenditures for the, for the.
Do I need to amend my motion to that, show that?
You can add that to it.
Yeah, I, I'll add that to my motion and it, it sort of brings up another thing, this may not be the time to do it. This business licensing thing, is that included in the budget or is that something I can talk to a little later?
Well, both. It's included within the budget as an authorization, but it's pending final settlement and authorization by the Alderman after discussion in the upcoming fiscal year.
The reason I'm saying that, I have had numerous calls that I'm not sure that's been actively explained to the businesses yet.
Well, I think we have the vehicle for doing that when the board has a work session.
So it's not by voting for this budget, that, that's not.
You're not automatically putting it in the.
Alright, then I'll let my motion stand with me on it.
So the motion is the budget as proposed with the amendment to carry forward the seventy-five hundred dollars from the historical society. Inside this is. All favor, raise your hands. Good work, board, even good, good work. As getting to be the norm, we're running through meetings pretty handily.
We're finding it, we're all very amicable tonight.
Is anybody?
Reminder, also, the board meeting next month by town charter is delayed from the holiday, which is maybe the fourth Tuesday, Tuesday.
Well, I'll come in, face for some reason, however. Anybody got something pressing on the line?
Yeah, of course I do. Going back to this business permits, I think there's been a misconception of a lot of businesses and I'm not sure that I understand this, not having businesses grossing less than four hundred thousand dollars not having that business license. And there is, I've had, as long as I've been sitting on this board, I've had more calls on that than anything else. And I would just like to see us rethink this in a work session or whatever and see if we can clarify this whole thing about why some businesses don't have to have a business license.
Yeah, well, that's, that's the ideal thing and that's what we sort of anticipated then. And we'll have plenty of time to do it because it's not, we're not planning. The timeframe would be January first, so there is adequate.
Alright, well, what's that?
I'd, uh, in, since we got a new appointment to the board and he needs something to do.
Give him a dirty job.
So, on our, on our issue, so. I would, since I have several more, I'd like to relinquish my position on, on the fire department and make a motion that this, uh, this board, or Jameson, to that position.
Guess you might say a double. Too quick, Farrell. That's fine. That's fine. Motion is second, put Farrell on there and pull a verbal off. I'll put everybody in your hand. I guess that's it, Farrell. I guess that's it. I thought it was gonna be the real problem. Rule development or something like that. So Farrell, what do you have in your defense? Tell us what your goals are. Beautiful.
And that, I'm just learning a lot about, uh, the different projects and stuff. I have a very high interest in economic development and industry and worked with it about three years ago. And worked working for the financial training program in South West. I hope that the board continues to work and plan on what Frank and Will look like in the next ten, twenty years up until now, throughout town. We'll be working on that. We can't wait for when this fall apart and we have two of the heads. I'm very much, you know, just glad also.
Well, good. We're looking forward to it, Farrell. We appreciate you.
Any other committees or documents or, I'd like to do so.
I can actually stop the sentence earlier. Motion, adjourned?
We have that July the first, about seven seventy, July, but we're gonna have a lunch in there at Fat Litty. It'll be noon on Saturday night, it's the closest, but I'll get invited. You know, if I can get ordered a certain thing, I'll be in.
It's always very.
And that's July one, but we're not closing on the construction.
We can do a parade or something.
Planting any grass or.
What it does serve a purpose, except for closing. Makes, makes it still important.
Just something to do.
Somebody gets out of here.
Some move.